It is about six eleven here on November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five, and this is a special meeting in the common council, the city of Poniatka. And we start this meeting.
Mayor Jenny?
Here.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Here.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Here.
Councilmember McHugh? Councilmember LaPari Shum?
Here.
Councilmember Carson?
Here.
Councilmember Harrington?
Here.
Councilmember Corst Rothberg?
Here.
Councilmember Madison?
Here. All right, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna pick up the conversation where we left it on the administrative personnel manual generally and salary structure around that more specifically. And where were we?
Well, I just wanna make sure, Elaine, did you get the packet that starts with this? If not, I think one of you... I was gonna say, I think I got it. No, I have it. I'm probably right. Are you sure? I got it.
Yeah, there's the memo.
Oh, there's the memo. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, no, I thought you were gonna share it. She's not here. All right, yes, I did.
Everybody's got paperwork in front of them?
We'll get one for Shannon, because she's not coming tonight, right?
Okay, all right, so everybody's got the appropriate paperwork in front of them, and let's just pick up where we left off.
Okay.
Great.
Thanks.
As you, as you launch, could you just give a thirty second summary of how far you were?
Okay, so we went through, I mean, the two or four page memo at the front of the packet is there, then the next section is the admin manual itself currently at the stance. And then there was a memo from Ginny after that that just goes over the ten year history of what salary increases were given to administrators. And then there are three sheets, well, two sheets, one back, one another, that show the individual salary adjustments in two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four, and two thousand and twenty-five for administrators. A little background information. In the memo, I just went over the purpose of the admin manual, the process by which we have laid out to go through updates. I made recommendations to the council for changes to the manual. I made recommendations to the council for salaries of all the non-union employees, and then the council ultimately can do what it wants with that. Each year, the council approves in December for the following January the salaries for each individual administrator and the overall admin manual, any changes. So that's what we're working towards tonight. We'll continue this discussion in the next finance committee meeting. Hopefully, based on the council's feedback, we'll come back with a full draft of any changes to the admin manual, a full list of any salary changes, and then that can go to council in a second for a group. And I mentioned that my contract as a city administrator is tied to the administrative manual as well, so any changes you make here might affect me as well. So while I'm in my professional capacity advising options for you to consider, keep in mind that it may impact me as well. So that kind of brings us back to where we were. One of the proposed changes for consideration, obviously the big thing, is salary increases. And given we did the salary study in two thousand and twenty-three, we implemented significant increases across the city, both for unions and administrators in two thousand and twenty-four, and it is now two thousand and twenty-six, coupled with the fact that we have budget limitations, the use of one point eight million dollars from unrestricted reserves along with the profit tax levy increase of three thousand dollars. Those were the primary budget parameters the council set. So as I, we were felding this budget presenting to you, I included fifteen hundred dollar raises, even the two thousand and twenty-six preliminary budget, which is now the tentative budget for administrators. Not recommending we do any major significant changes because, again, we did a salary study not too long ago. We have not done another one since then, and I would like to recommend that we make those changes. You can make wholesale changes and adjust people around, and it's done based on a comprehensive study, and that is something we might consider again in the future as we'll get to. So what's in the tentative budget now is fifteen hundred dollar increases, flat dollars for all the administrative employees, and there are thirty-one of those. That total salary increase would be forty-six thousand five hundred dollars. Another option the council may wish to consider is a two thousand dollar flat increase. That total increase would be sixty-two thousand dollars. Obviously, the difference is something that would need to be added into the budget if you did that. Another option would be a percentage-based increase, and I'd recommend you consider three point one percent based on the CPI U Northeast comparison September two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-four. That total base salary would be seventy-five thousand and change. In that case, obviously, based on percentages, administrators are getting different amounts depending on what their base salary is. The largest increase would be just over thirty-seven hundred dollars, smallest would be about fifteen hundred dollars. You might consider, in that case, setting a minimum of two thousand dollars. And if you did that, that would apply to nine employees. So any employees that, based on three point one percent of their current two thousand and twenty-five salary, if that equals less than two thousand dollars, they would get two thousand dollars, and the others would get the percentage. So that is one thing for consideration. We can discuss that more now, and ultimately, what I'm looking for tonight is feedback. What option out of those or anything else would you like me to consider? If you have census tonight, what you'd like to see in a draft brought back to the finance committee at the next meeting, I'll do that, or if you want further discussion, I'll take your lead. Scott?
I just have one other question that I kept on. Have you ever thought about doing a higher, higher on the lower amount, the lower paid? So you adjust it kind of almost like backwards instead of like the higher paid, because the percentage gets, say, X amount, but the lower percentage gets the higher amount than it was now from there? Try to bring it up.
It really depends on your, your philosophy. What are you trying to accomplish with salaries? So if you look at it as I'm getting a certain salary, and that defines my standard of living. And if you say that the CPI U goes up three point one percent, and if you want to keep the standard of living the same and apply a percentage to every one salary, while the dollar gap is going to grow year over year, you could argue that it's based on the cost of living. If you do the flat dollar adjustments, and they go up, everyone goes up the same over time, the standard of living's gap is shrinking. And if you do what you're suggesting, I think is, so let's say you did a four thousand dollar increase for the lowest paid employee, and then, you know, a percentage for the higher paid employees where they get less than four thousand, then you shrink that gap quicker. Does that make sense?
All right, so we've got, we've got that. A suggestion from Scott. We also have these three recommendations of the fifteen hundred, two thousand dollar, and three point one percent increase, which are not locked in to anything, but they are what's put in front of you, and if the council would like to discuss these and maybe determine if there's one among the three that we lean toward, or if we are looking to do something entirely different. Yes, Kenny?
I have some suggestions. I read through the admin manual. There are a few things that make sense to me, and then some things that I think we could do to offset some of the costs. So what I would suggest is a cost of living increase plus half a percent that goes up when it's up and down when it's down. I know that that is harder to predict, but I think that it's, you know, what's being asked for, and it's fair. And I just have some questions about some of the things that are that are in the admin manual. So when I look at like the longevity, I don't feel like it's necessary to give longevity every year. I would do it every five years. I wouldn't do two hundred dollars for five years, but I think it would be realistic to do a thousand at five years, twenty-five hundred at ten years, thirty-five hundred at fifteen years, and five thousand at twenty years, which I think would save us money in the long run. Also, the idea of paying out vacation time when someone resigns is absurd to me. I can't believe that we've ever done that before. Also, that they can be carried over forever is also, I mean, that's just like not, that's really cush, like, so I think one year is totally reasonable. Additionally, someone being granted ten days vacation on day one, which I see we did in like two thousand and twenty-two for two thousand and twenty-one, when many of us were brand new. I think that should be, should accrue at the same rate as sick time for the first year, and then ten days for years one to four. The amount of vacation time that we pay out at retirement is a lot at a daily rate. I would do that at a hundred dollars per day for a maximum of a hundred days. That's ten thousand dollars maximum. Vacation buyout at daily rate. Sorry, I'm going backwards. I think personally, you should roll to sick time and follow the maximum accrual and buyout schedule for that. And I don't think under, oh, sorry. Under D plus employment benefits, I don't think that a retiree should be able to hop on and off the plan. We have two provisions where that's possible for, and seven, I think, those should be stripped from the manual. With the health insurance buyout, the health insurance policy, spouses who are employed under, sorry, health insurance two, section one, subsection B, in cases where spouses are employed by the city of Poniatka and eligible for health insurance, they may not be able to move in separate plans, but often two individual plans are cheaper than a family plan for the city, so I'm not sure why we don't allow that. But I do think we should also add under the health insurance buyout that if someone is covered by a city plan under their spouse, that they're not eligible for the buyout. It doesn't say that, so if someone being hired, I think it's just that, I'm sorry. Tuition reimbursement is great. I'm wondering how much that is utilized and how much we budget for it. And then some of these things, because this applies to department heads, I think it's interesting that it says by the department head, so we may wanna just...
This applies to more than department heads and...
Why?
Just all the managers.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying, like, where it says by the employee's department head, it maybe should say supervisor. And also, reviews should be done annually and retained in a personnel file. I think it's kind of wild that we don't have that in there.
So in Article One, department head requests covered in this manual shall be approved by the city administrator. Perhaps we can clarify that language, but the intent there is to say where it refers to.
Okay.
Somebody being reviewed by department head, if it is department head, then it's approved by the city.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Do we have a provision for cancer screening or a policy? That's what I thought, so it just doesn't say that in here, so what's your...
Does it need to be listed?
Okay. Okay, I think that's all my notes on there, and then I just wanted to understand how, obviously, we had a request, a budget request, to change some grid alignment, and so before we did any of that, I wanted to understand how these titles were assigned to this grid in the first place. And I didn't mention that I think we should have a salary governor over a hundred and thirty-ish thousand dollars, but I'm flexible on that, where it'd be a cost of living plus half a percent divided by two.
So...
Because that would address the compression issue when people's salaries grow.
Kenny, what was that last number?
Cost of living plus half a percent divided by two.
All right, so...
That's a lot, but Greg was typing furiously, so I'm confident that he got it all.
Yeah, but there's, there's no, there's no...
I think I got most of it.
All right, so somebody, when I was saying, I just come in, somebody mentioned the budget review committee. I don't know who it might have been, but it does make, I think Len may have mentioned it in a couple of council meetings back, wondering what's gonna be the future of that. It makes sense for me to have that continue with potentially a focus working with the finance and HR committee in some fashion to be determined by these two committees to... There's too much that we're looking at here that might need to be modified, certainly need to be discussed. Tonight, what we wanna be looking at is the dollar amounts that are gonna impact the budget that we're, that we're working on, but that's not to say...
They all, I think they all do.
True.
But we need to...
Yes, but, but there's a, there's a big picture piece, and it's a longer term conversation that is certainly not gonna wind up being something that happens even in one meeting. It's gonna take a few meetings, and I feel like the budget review committee, among other charges that they've had, that they'll continue to have, might wanna very, will be focusing on this in discussion and then collaboration with the finance and HR committee, because, again, your agenda, Cecilia, is monstrous on a weekly basis, I mean, by meeting basis. And so working collaboratively, what that looks like, I'll leave to you guys, but there are many questions, many of them, you know, seem to warrant deep discussion and consensus of council. So that's what I'd like to do, and I would like us to, to really kind of focus on the numbers that are gonna be impacting the budget that we're discussing this evening, so. Okay, so hopefully that works for you. Len?
So kind of going along those lines, I actually want to go back to Greg and ask, what was your thought process of attaching labor with CPI? Because I took your suggestion and went to the wrong side of CPI dash U Northeast region, and I don't see subsection of labor in this manner. And then, I guess, along those lines, we have, through this period of season, compared ourselves with other communities, other cities, what do they have? Is it similar to us? And then you mentioned it in a previous meeting, was NICOM may do it annually or by annually. I would like to see that. So for me, I'm not ready to make a decision by reading your suggestions, but I would like some background information, so if NICOM could provide our community with that and or the other communities that we've been comparing ourselves with, with water and sewer rates and other aspects, if we could do something about that.
Yeah, we, so the CPI is just eight percent, you can use a social security percentage increase, or there's some sort of cost of living percentage increase, you know, whatever benchmark you wanna use. I think the CPI has been used in the past in other iterations of the admin manual, that's why I'm looking at. Comparing ourselves to the communities that we're talking about in two thousand and twenty-three with salary study, that's something I would suggest, again, we do that every three or four years, keep a future that we're benchmarking. The NICOM salary survey, I can share that with you, that's available through NICOM, I think you can log in and find it as well, but I can email that out. I think, I think they do it at least every two years, every year. I know I have twenty-three and twenty-five. For some reason, I think they might not have done it before. Again, that looks at certain entitlements across municipalities and is self-reported. I think some of the issues you see with any salary study, whether it's one we paid for or it's NICOM, so you're gonna have certain positions where, from one municipality to the next, when you dig into it, they might do things a little differently from what they actually have, or they actually may use. One of the instances, I think, of NICOM, so they have a building inspector, they have a coenforcement inspector or officer. I think, depending on the community you go to, you might have both with others, you might have one or the other, depending on how the community reports it, it might be a little different, so sometimes you have to, you might wanna dig a little deeper. We have not done similar to the city comparisons outreach that we did. We did not look at comparable administrative manuals, places that have that or not, to get into that level of detail. We don't have that. At this point, that would be a, perhaps, a goal of the next composition analysis, is to dig into that level of detail. Do you have some suggestions?
I just wanted to comment, and also, on this, I was scheduled to say, but we also did not collect fringe benefits, so, for example, we don't know what your health insurance policies are, if they have dental division or, you know, polished needs, kind of things that we don't know. But one thing I would like to emphasize during this conversation is that, with the detailed question that I'm writing myself and other agents have done in building and administrative contracts, that we're also looking at the contract benefits, for example. So, for example, all of the contract benefits have vacation paid out at the end of your term. So if you were to take that out of the admin manual, it would actually be decreasing the benefits that the administrators have compared to staff.
Right.
So when we, when we look at the manual, we are not only looking at what we think that the tenants can absorb, but we're looking at what the union contracts have negotiated and, and how it lines up. And when we convert it to, by basis, from the George's administrator, we classify the admin manual job titles based on a number of cases, the number of years of position, the responsibilities, how many people they supervise, what qualifications you need to take the job, what is the difference of the administrator of the department compared to the highest paid subordinate that they supervise. We, we did hours and hours of work in classifying where they fell. So for the, if the council wants to, to share, we can share all that work if you're able to, you know, participate if that's what you choose, but that's why we have us, for us to give you that information, so you don't have to spend all those hours in all that work. So I just keep in mind how many hours and days and weeks and months and months, and years of experience performing through all of this. And we watch when those people become administrators, we want people to, because once they do that, they know how to behave. And, you know, and as you know, all our administrators are, are mandatory, all working. And so if, if, that's why the fringe benefits could be a little different in the admin manual as compared to the union workers. And I actually have a summary sheet that figures all of what I call units for PBA, sergeant, CCA, and, and player, you know, captains, sort of, you know, and, and we line up, and that's how it's true in the admin manual anyway. And in as far as the amount of hours of vacation that we approve, it maxes out. So if it doesn't approve ever, but you get up to a max, and that's where you stay. And quite often, administrators will use hours every year on their annual salary date because they have their max.
So Jenny, I'm sorry, Jenny, so, so that's, I mean, the, the, the depth of knowledge and the work that you've done on this is, you know, beyond impressive, and it's extremely valuable to a conversation that we will have, I think. And tonight, what I would like to do, so, so thank you, and my expectation is that the council, within the context of these committees, is not gonna have to do the kind of labor that you've invested, so having that at their disposal is for me very, very helpful. So thank you, Jenny. Tonight, though, in front of us, we have a number that's in the budget right now, which is fifteen hundred dollars, I believe that's what it is, right? For a total of forty-six thousand five hundred dollars, they say, salary increase, and then we have a two thousand dollar increase, which comes to sixty-two thousand dollars, and then we have the three point one, which takes it up to a little over seventy-five thousand dollars. And to Len's request, there's gonna be a little bit more information coming relative to other precedents that we might be able to show and be able to extrapolate from that where we land. I would say, for the benefit of our moving forward this evening, we probably want to decide, do we want to work with the number that's already in the budget? Is there rationale to go beyond that, understanding that it's likely to be modified, but at least it'll get us to a place where we can start to talk about, you know, the rest of this budget in a way that is a little bit more specific. Does that work? Yes, Don?
Yes, I think your recommendation is a good one. Can we go with, go on, that's in the budget, or I think that's the first one in the list.
Other thoughts?
I would prefer not to support the admin manual as presented. I think there are things that we need to look at as a group. I'm not in favor of the current admin manual.
Right, and I'm sorry, but for clarification, what we're looking at here is one of these three choices that are relative to the dollar amount that we're assigning to administrative raises without necessarily accepting, as we know, we're going to be looking at it via admin manual as being something that's carved in stone.
I guess I don't understand the distinction.
We're, we're looking for a dollar amount so we can move forward with the budget, but let me, let me go to Elaine.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm looking at the three options presented here, because that's, that's what we're focused on here, right, are these three salary options. And, you know, based on the input that we've gotten, you know, from the staff, you know, and I, I respect the hours, you know, that everybody's put into this, and I really appreciate it. I think going with flat dollar amount is the way to go, based on what I've learned about the salaries and where that's headed. And, you know, I, I mean, at this point, I am happy to, you know, support the, what is already included in the budget, so that's where I was standing right here.
Further discussion? Yes?
I would concur with Elaine and Don, but partly it's because, without having established any final decisions about the rest of the budget and where we're coming from, we'd not be able to add any more to the increases that we've already made. So I hope we could revisit that once we have other numbers.
Until Len's request, we, we're gonna be looking at additional information that may wind up providing some rationale for tweaking this, but just in terms of getting us the numbers that we can work with. Again, nothing is carved in granite here, but it does move us forward, so. Len, did you have some?
Ginny, later, when we do come to a final thought process with council, will we pull the funds from?
If we increase...
If we do increase.
Without monitoring, it depends on if you look at the tax levy. Right now, the tax levy is setting at five hundred fifty-three thousand dollars. So if we were increasing the salary, I would suggest that we probably would go, because this would be a competing factor here, and we would not suggest going to the town to pay. Or we could cut expenses somewhere else, and so...
I was thinking just a little bit different. I was thinking just a little bit different. We know that we're gonna have substantial amount of money coming back from positions that weren't filled during the twenty-five year. We won't know how much definitively until paid. So we could go through the administrators, administration manual and refine it to where the council feels comfortable, but if we do increase in any of the benefits, we could potentially pull, excuse me, the money from those surpluses. Is that, is that a possibility?
Well, the surplus is yes, but you have to remember that the surplus is something that, the surplus is at the end of the year, the surplus will be closed, either to the district or to the county, so we will have revenue source to offset. So, so you then have to do the fund balance again, unless you're going to pump it through the current vacancies that various departments have in two thousand and twenty-six, then we would just reallocate the funds. But I want you to keep in mind that then we want to have that double increase for two thousand and twenty-seven, because you will have the increase that's not in the two thousand and twenty-six budget again, and then the one in two thousand and sixteen, then you're going to, or you'll be able to adopt it with the same surplus.
Yeah, so I'd like to avoid that scenario, but similar to what we're doing right now, we've done it for a few council meetings, whereas we're taking the surplus, like I have tonight's motion, and reallocating those funds, so isn't that a possibility, though, that we could do that with twenty-five's surplus for this particular scenario?
You could, but to do that, it would be appropriating fund balance, since they're having a rather different revenue source for the payers.
Elaine, did you have some? Yes?
So I just wanted to say that, just moving forward, I think this budget is just enormous challenging, because there are so many unknowns. There's sort of known and unknowns. And so I, I just wanted to say to, I think, follow up on what Elaine and Elaine pointed out, which is that fifteen hundred is budgeted, and I think adding more at this point, given that there are so many unknowns out there for the coming year, that at least that is something that we can work with, begins to build a concrete plan. So that was my, that was to go back to a point earlier.
So, so we're beginning to generate a consensus around the fifteen hundred that's in the budget as clay not stone, and we haven't heard from Scott at the moment. You wanna, are you comfortable with the fifteen hundred that's in?
Scott, I'm not discussing that. We have some...
All right, that's, that's fine, that's fine, Scott.
So...
Yeah, that's fine. You're, you're with that? So, so given the fact that we're, we're short... So, so given the fact that we're short essentially two votes with Scott having to abstain from that, we've got everybody, loved one that is supportive of it, I would just say unless there's reason that anyone has to object, we could consider that as being a number that we'll work with as we move forward with the budget.
And I just wanted to add, do we get further into this meeting, when I go to find the projection, we're going to be thinking about this conversation then.
Okay. Jenny, how do you hear that?
Well, we both agree on the meeting, and I keep talking about the projection, and I think that's what we're going to do.
This, this motion, or if we want to. In that case, Greg, I'm going to kick it back to you.
Thanks, Mary. So continuing on with what is the third page of that memo, there are a few additional adjustments in addition to that fifteen hundred dollar that you've tentatively decided upon that I would recommend. And those are listed here, they're included in the budget, they've been listed previously for you. I wanted to listen again. So a city clerk receives a two thousand dollar annual stipend for IT liaison duties, which we've been working on defining exactly what those are, but I know for certain Kerry spends a lot of time on that and effort, and it's very valuable to the city. So I would recommend, at least at this time, increasing that from two thousand to five thousand. And that's included in the budget. The deputy city clerk, I would recommend increasing the base salary by twenty-five hundred dollars on top of that fifteen hundred dollar. That's in recognition, looking at the job duties and the grade that that's in in comparison with similar titles in that grade and aligning them. HR specialist, we have two of them, one of them was hired eight months or so after the first, and they're, because of what they were hired in the calendar year, and the amount they're hired, they're making fifteen hundred dollars. There's a difference of fifteen hundred dollars. I think the base salary should be equal, so it's proposed raising the one that's lower up to match the other. I think years of service are reflected with longevity payments, and they're performing the same, substantially the same duties. Chief water treatment plant operator proposing increased base salary, additional five thousand dollars to match what we did have done, or to match the base salary, the chief wastewater plant operator. When we promoted our chief wastewater plant operator, we did a similar thing, they were hired at a certain rate, our new supervisor didn't have a ton of experience, they gained that experience, improved their, their value and their ability to do the job, and also took on additional duties. And in this case, the water treatment plant operator's done a similar thing, he's in there for a few years now, he's taken on recently the laboratory director duties, that relates to our lab certification at state level, which previously had been covered by standard. So this is mirroring what we did with the wastewater plant years ago, following the same sort of timeline, and this is, you know, essentially was what, you know, my ambition happening, we promoted a new to originally, so that was why that is included as an additional this time. Those are the only changes beyond the baseline amount that I recommended and included in the tentative budget.
So we'll need to have some discussion of this, understanding that at least one of these things will be dropping out of, in terms of discussion, but Katie, go ahead.
Oh, that's great, dude. I just want to say that I, I think that, that the point is to get away from merit increases and half after going on a prescribed schedule. I'm hearing an awful lot of, I think this person, maybe they've done extra X, Y, Z, and I just, I don't think it's a good strategy. I mean, I support giving, giving people reasons for merit, but it just seems like the argument is, you know, the flat dollar amount keeps everybody equal, and, you know, we've got these prescribed steps, but then there's, you know, additional technology being made, and that's what leads to situations where people feel like they're being undervalued. So either I think we do one, or we do the other.
Jenny, can you give us the readers' digest on why we don't do merit pay?
And while it was established years ago that merit pay was a political issue, for example, there were accusations, well, when mayor likes me, so mayor's going to give more money to that person sitting next to me.
Sure.
Based on merit. So that's why Mayor Renner took merit out of the formula.
Sure.
He treated everybody the same, and that's why there's probation, if you're not performing your job duties, you have this many days to rectify, and also by disciplinary procedures and things like that. So it takes a politic out of it.
Sure.
It also, it also puts a level of expectation, these are your job duties, and you meet them, and you're treated the same as everybody else, and that's covered by the manual.
Sure.
And the flat, you know, and as I was saying, we determine the market value, which can be argued for decretes, but we determine through the salary study, the market value of where merit should land, according to all the information we have. And then keeping that going forward, so that way this position doesn't go this way as this position works. So if you take the cost of living, say it's two percent, two percent on fifty thousand dollars is much different than two percent on a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I, that's why I don't want percentages, because the math just ends up with different results. I want things where we should calculate it, they just based on the pay. If you talk about your social security cost of living, the person that's getting two thousand dollars social security check goes up two percent. You compare that amount that that person's getting compared to, you know, a high paid administrator, that's why if you take the merit raises out, everybody is treated equally based on that they're performing their job duties. And yes, when we hire an administrator at, with very little experience, and we graded that job title to perform at this level, we start them out at a younger, or at a lower value, so they can get the experience that they need, they can prove themselves, and once that happens, they're able to jump up to the, to the job rate. And that's the way.
Thank you, Jenny. Elaine?
Yeah, I, I disagree that it's individually based, like, looking at the reasoning here, I'm seeing reasons of, you know, justifying what it does for the city instead. Like, looking at the city clerk recommendation here, it's in recognition of time and effort, the added value. For the deputy clerk, it's in recognition of job duties and alignment. Human resource specialist, it's about making sure that they receive the same base salary. So that is about making sure that they are, you know, equitable there. And then, again, with the chief water treatment plant operator, it's to match a base salary. So to me, they seem like reasonable recommendations to bring everybody into better alignment.
And, and the reason with the longevity, the reason that was created was to recognize the person's loyalty and additional experience that they have with the city, and that's where the longevity comes.
Retention strategy.
And so you've got the job rate, and you have the longevity to avoid the people that are here longer with more experience.
I think that looking at these, these four positions, that I have a real difficulty with these in specific, but I does feel a little bit apocryphal, partly because all the work has been done diligently by you guys, but it makes it difficult for me to, you know, assess whether the amount seem appropriate. And I remember at one point, we talked about a, maybe it would be the Budget Review Committee or some group, looking at more, more widely press aboard if there are other adjustments that should be made. And I would propose that perhaps that could be done with, when we're not in the middle of the budget, say in January, with any changes retroactive back to January first, because...
We can add retroactive adjustments for administrators.
Okay. Okay. Then do it right away in January, so that we're not, we're not too much time. But, but does that, my question for you, Jenny, is, does the amounts of these raises that we're talking about skew the budget enough that that's going to cause a, cause a problem?
These amounts that Greg has listed is not already in the budget.
Okay.
And, and because Greg's, as City Administrator recommends, he's, he's done a whole, he's determined the value that you should consider, and is that, in my viewpoint, is that's his responsibility to say what the value is? And, and that's what your, the council members are depending on, his profession is important.
Right, and I deeply trust Greg for this, but it just makes it a little bit uneasy to not have the background information on how he got to the decision.
Let me just go to Elaine.
I just, we already reviewed these, though. They were in the budget request form, so that is where the information is found. And when we went through these, I mean, I hear everybody reevaluating now, but when we went through the budget request forms, we were all good with this. This is where we landed. So I, you know, I, I would like to stick with what, with this, so that we can move forward on other pieces of discussion, because I know we've got a lot, and this one we have already spent a bunch of time on, and we can go back to our budget review forms to check out the details if we're not sure on it.
Don?
I agree with Elaine, we should move on, and we should approve these raises.
Further discussion, yeah?
Not convinced, but I'll go with that opinion.
All right. Scott, you are not going to weigh in on this, understandably, and when you're, since this, are you supporting or no? Yes. Okay. I think we have consensus in any case, unanimous, I think we have majority. So it's back to you, Greg.
All right. Next thing is longevity for consideration. So currently, admin employees receive one thousand dollars per year after five years of service with the city, and that increases by two hundred dollars per year thereafter, up to a maximum four thousand dollars per year, which they reach at year twenty. Beyond that, year twenty-one, they get four thousand, year twenty-two, they get four thousand, there's no more increases, but they still get their longevity. You could consider increasing that. Just gave examples, if you increase, extended that to twenty-five years, or thirty years, or thirty-five years, or forty years, the longer employee stays, if you continue to give them a two hundred dollar per year increase in their longevity amount, to show the, how that would affect the 2026 budget. Obviously, it depends on how many employees you have that have been here that long, how much you're paying. Again, the only reason you would consider that would be having another incentive for employees to stick around longer. If you see a value in encouraging that, this is one way to do that. Again, I don't really make a recommendation here, these are, these are things to be considered.
And again, given that, I think there's some agreement that the, that some of this will be looked at, potentially even modified, through discussion of council over the course of these next months, we're looking at 2026's impact. And so really what we're looking at is your recommendation in terms of how it affects 2026, and again, it's already included in the tentative budget, so as a case of whether or not, that's a two thousand, eight hundred dollars, whether or not that's something that we have a consensus that what is included in the, if it's included in the budget, makes sense to work with as we move forward in our budget discussion. Yes, Katie?
Oh, Greg, we're in shopping papers.
Okay. Okay. So I, I feel like we're generally speaking supportive as we start to move through this number.
Let's see, Claire, just keeping it in the tentative budget currently.
Yes.
Okay. The last consideration that I would suggest you consider is the retiree health insurance eligibility, Article seven, health insurance. So currently, administrative employees will receive, or eligible to receive retiree health insurance if they retire directly from the city, going on under a New York State overall retirement assistance plan, with at least fifteen years of service with the city. You could consider, recommending you consider, adding language to provide retiree health insurance coverage to an employee who retires with at least ten years of service and who has reached the established Medicare eligible age, which is currently sixty-five years at the time of retirement. So let's say you're a sixty-five-year-old employee who's worked here for ten or more years, and you retire, you would be eligible for retiree health insurance at that time. This benefit of that would be, again, encouraging employees who may have come to the city going on later in their careers, so they haven't worked here for thirty years, but they have been here a significant amount of time, and it might encourage them to stay a little bit longer if they're approaching sixty-five, or if they're not quite at the fifteen-year mark, but maybe they'll get to sixty-five, and if they're at eleven or twelve, thirteen, fourteen years, that might incentivize them to stick around longer. That could be about, you could say, have employees come here later in their career, done a good job, you know, it's just another way to try to keep people, get people to stick around a bit longer. I just kind of calculated, based on the thirty-one current administrative employees we have now, seven of them, this might affect them. It's really for somebody who comes here after the age of fifty, so they would be under that fifteen years of service by the time they age sixty-five, this would be a potential benefit to them. Someone like myself, this isn't an effect, because I, thank you very much.
So between you and Jenny, what would that look like for the city budget? Not knowing how that rolls over with Medicare, and our insurance, it's not going to be that much increased, but just don't make fault, it's totally on Medicare.
Right, that's why, you know, tying into the Medicare eligible age, the retiree health insurance cost to say that one is drastically lower than if they were a full-time employee. Jenny, what's the, if you know, that's his contribution?
It would be about forty-three hundred dollars, we are, less than contribution. So it would, so it would be about thirty-six hundred dollars a year.
Per employee that met this requirement?
Yes. And, and if you want my two cents on this, I highly recommend this, and the reason I highly recommend it is because in the last, used to years, we have hired a lot of people that have been in their career, and we're putting them with their talent and their experience as the normal, and awarding them, you know, encouraging them to stay at least until age sixty-five, and offering them the sixty-five plus health insurance is a great incentive of trying to get them here to stay even longer.
We've talked about retention since the first days on this council report. Yes, Katie?
I think it's a great idea. The other thing that I was noticing was missing from that admin manual is possibly a retirement incentive. Folks who have been here for a long time, who are creating higher salaries, possibly offering an incentive to retire within the first couple of years that they're eligible, and then be able to bring on someone at a lower salary starting to clear. I know we lose institutional knowledge that way, but there, there is a benefit to that as well.
You have to be very careful on how retirement incentives are worked.
Okay.
They're actually illegal.
Oh.
Just call it a retirement incentive.
Okay.
So that's why you need a HR specialist to work, and a HR lawyer to make sure that whatever is offered is legal.
Gotcha. I think that's why it's happening. Okay.
Yes, so you said there was nine employees out of the, except attention, seven, seven. Is that this year, 2026?
No, I just mean out of the thirty-one administrative employees, there are seven who started their career with the city, probably after age fifty, so by the time they reach sixty-five, they would have had less than fifteen years of experience.
And if we're not affecting the community, we can go out of this year, or 2026.
So this is something we're going to want to bring back to the finance committee, you might be reading this.
Right, this, this one is not, this is changing, I think you should consider for the manual, but it's not going to impact 2026 by it, so.
And again, we're likely to have some extended conversations around the administrative manual.
Can I ask the council members, I want to calculate the retirement cost.
Go ahead.
As the council knows, as, when I calculate the retiree health insurance estimate, I always put in the potential retirees for the next year.
All right. Greg, anything further?
That's it.
Okay. All right, I'd like to move on to something of a, like a work assignment that you might recall, we were looking at all those various things that we needed to add to the budget over the course of these last, so, discussions, and, and I asked that you take a look at the book and see if there wasn't something that you wanted to suggest cutting. And I don't know how you were fared with that, but if anybody has something to suggest, this would be the outstanding. Yes, Don?
Well, I looked at it, and I, I don't think it's the council, the individual council members or the council in general to get down into the weeds, I look more at the big picture, so I wanted to just make a, a quick review of what I, what I would like. We'll see where it goes. it goes. So I don't think we should look at the budget in isolation. We should consider the property taxes that our residents pay, you know, because they pay other property taxes as well. They pay school taxes, which is the largest. Then there's the city tax, which is the second largest, all by the county. And there's water and sewer, which are really fees. Then there's the library tax. I asked, sent him off, I can look at his tax bill. $8,655. That's a larger one. The average is probably somewhat lower. Second thing I'd like to point out is that we should also take into account other things that affect the residents. So inflation is running a little bit above 3% right now. Utilities in New York State are up about 11% year-to-date, or year-over-year, rather. Rents are up about 5%. Monthly homeowners expenses are up about 3.8%. Employer-sponsored health insurance is up about 7%. Food, 2.7%. Meat, I've been a vegetarian for 50 years, this doesn't apply to meat, 5.2%. And restaurant deals are up about 4.7% year-to-year. So I think it's important that we put all of what we're doing here in a larger context. So if it were totally up to me, I would not raise our property tax above the tax cap, and I would consider cutting 1% of our spending, which I believe would be roughly $220,000, something like that. Where that $220,000 would come from, I think that would be up to Greg and Jenny to make the proposal. So that's the way I see our budget.
And of course, we've discussed this, where I think most people would think that the council's job, within the context of these discussions and given all this information, has responsibility to be making those suggestions for cuts, but I appreciate your comments. Lynn, do you have something?
About this time.
Okay. So does anybody have anything that they're inclined to want to cut from the budget? No?
I can answer that question.
No. Okay. Well, so, so then we need to pursue on the course that we run ourselves. Yes?
Not sure it's a cut.
Okay.
So Greg and I talked till tonight, and we were talking about positions and stuff going back in. Greg and I missed our argument, had a conversation, let me know. Greg's recommendation was pass the budget as he presented it, don't add anything back into it. Basically, we can work throughout the year, come up to what? What we think is important and stuff, and work throughout the year, and if we start getting some of the monies in that we hope that we can get in, we can start talks about adding some of the stuff back in. And I'm quite glad to actually go that way, because I was one of the ones that said, I'm okay with going with the tax cap by 5%, I think we hit 5.6. So we hit, I'm okay, because I said we need to do it. That's, that's what I'd be comfortable holding at. So I don't know if that helps anybody else out, but, I mean, Greg did do the work, and Jenny, sorry to keep her, but, you know, our department heads agree, Jenny, they did the, they did the labor, and.
Yeah, just to, just to expound on that conversation we had, and we were talking about, well, what cuts would we make? Because that was the question that I'll work. And I just said, the council added back in $300,000, roughly $260-some thousand dollars of expenses that had already been cut in order to meet the primary budget parameters that council had initially set. So we gave you the budget that you asked for as far as the revenues, expenditures. We're talking about things to add. So if you were to ask me again, what should we cut, it's probably the things that we had previously cut, as opposed to looking elsewhere, unless the council looked through those forms and saw something else that they thought was a better candidate to remove. But ultimately, if the council desires to do those things, if you identified increasing the tax levy as was included in the tentative budget right now, would be my recommendation to do that, as opposed to taking more from the unrestricted fund balance. I'm not opposed to doing more and increasing, because these are all things identified by departments that need to be done, but understanding the budget considerations, if you're going to cut back down somewhere, I would say just go back to where we presented the issue.
Before I, I mean, and I'm not, and before I go to the city, actually, so I'm not a voting member here, unless somehow we wind up dead on the jealousy. But I want to weigh in for what it's worth as well. I absolutely do concur with your concerns, Donna, over all the unknowns, the known unknowns that we have currently facing the citizenry of the, of the city. Doesn't change the needs of the budget, you know? If we were to do without concern for its impact, and it's only, draws on the council's back, but nonetheless, you get to a certain number of straws, we would, I think, probably save $600,000 is what we had, and we already went through the budget and did actually have the conversations that we wanted to add in in these various things. I don't, you know, I'll respect that. I don't really see why we would, having gone through and determined by consensus that we want to add this, we need to add that, et cetera, et cetera, that we would then just cut them as if we hadn't discussed them. But what I would suggest is that we do not know what we're going to be seeing in terms of occupancy tax. We do not know what we're going to see in terms of the aid that may come from New York State to SUNY residential campus communities, and that may be something that is, you know, going to change the dynamic of our budget. We don't know about paid parking. We don't know about some of the other funding streams that, you know, have overperformed. We don't know where we're going to be in terms of the numbers of people we have actually pulling salaries, even though those salaries are designated. So I would suggest, again, I don't vote, but I would suggest that we have healthy restricted reserves, and it is not something that we should be borrowing from. And it does push us, it does kick the can a bit, but in this moment, with the numbers of uncertainties around electric costs and, and, you know, healthcare costs, and food costs, and, and, you know, the seemingly pending recession, that we take that into account as well. And so I would suggest that we do as we did last year and work with a $300,000 budget, and pull the additional $300,000 out of unrestricted reserves. I know that doesn't make you happy, but that's what I would suggest, so that we are still funding ourselves to the $600,000, and able to bring in the positions and the, and the equipment, et cetera, et cetera, that we all agreed that we needed. That's one. Go ahead, Elaine.
Yeah, I just wanted to just more generally address really this uncertainty, you know, that we're all facing with some of these questions with the budget, because I think what that does, it makes, it creates discomfort, right? Because we have these areas where we're not certain. But I think it's really important that we also keep in mind that the budget that we create and that we pass, you know, for this year, we're going to continue to work on it throughout 2026 as we move through that year, and we will be able to respond to those challenges, you know, like some of these uncertainties, you know, as they become more clear. And I think, you know, just setting ourselves up with the strongest budget possible will give us the most options and the best, you know, level of services for our community. So I really just wanted to address that I think that discomfort is just going to be present, you know, for this process, and, you know, just reassure ourselves that, you know, what we do now, we can continue to work on this living document as we go through the next year.
So, Sue?
I wanted to just draw two points. One, that the struggle of community members across wards is something that is deeply troubling. And, you know, we could have a probably broader discussion about why it shouldn't be this way. That said, I think what local government does is provide resources and support that no other entity does. And, and they're often like supporting elements, conditions, like clean water. And with that, I think we have a responsibility to our residents to provide those services and to continue with those services that sustain life. And I, my other point is just that the tax cap is an arbitrary number, and I think that needs to be pointed out. It can be placed anywhere. And so, because of that arbitrariness, I think we have the greater responsibility is to providing the resources that our residents depend on.
Let me go to Scott.
You go, I'm for Shannon.
It's just real quick. Speaking of the tax cap, I just reminded, I listened to NIKOM, they were discussing legislative priorities, and one of the things that they are looking at is how effective the tax cap really is. And so they're going to be advocating for some changes in the upcoming year, as long as that's what the, you know, group agrees to proceed with. But that's one of the priorities that they're looking at, because they're acknowledging that the current tax cap does not meet the needs of municipalities. So what they were talking about was actually like, I think, leaving out capital projects and some other things from those calculations. So with that in mind, I just want us to keep in mind that there is a recognition that this tax cap method, you know, is not really suffice, you know, to meet municipalities' needs.
So, yeah, so I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is, I kind of agree with everything. And I think what I'm saying is, is I'm not opposed to pulling money back out of our reserves to put some of this stuff back in next year, as we go into next year, when we sit down. I'm just saying, like, if we get the budget passed, knowing that we're doing this, knowing that we're going to go into next year and say, all right, now, as we meet these priorities, hopefully this money's coming in, or hey, we just got this money, so maybe instead of having to pull $300,000 out, maybe it's only $100,000 out or whatever. I'm not opposed to doing that. We do it all year long anyway. We have stuff that comes up. So, I mean, I'm a realist, and I get that. But I just think, like, if we can get the labor that they've done, get that passed, knowing what we're going to this point, we can still work on this. And I think I said it last year, too, we should be working on this all year long. And that's what the budget committee did all last year, and set up a lot of good stuff for us. I mean, there's a lot of good stuff that came out of that. Stuff that I even forgot from sitting here for a couple of years. So I think it's, you know, and I think that's the, that's what we need to do, is remember that that budget's always a part of us to work on throughout the year. So when we sit here in a finance meeting, or we're sitting here like we are now, and sitting there saying, hey, we need to do this, we need to do this, however we want to fund this, okay, let's take this out of here, because we know we did this. We know, oh, this money came in that we can count on, you know, that we are going to get the occupancy tax. I'm hoping it comes through, you know, kind of everything. But, you know, so I get it, and in that way we can start looking at our department heads and say, look, we know you guys cut a lot, and now we're trying to help. We got this, we're trying to do this, we're going to try to set us up for even next year for the budget. Because I think it was the year, I was a year earlier than Jenny saying we need to go to 5%, and now we're up to 10%. And I'm looking at it going like we, because your tax cap flattens you, and it is, it's a bad tax cap. It's, it's 2%. It possibly goes up 3%. That's how we're here. So I guess just to circle back around, because I'm rambling like somebody else used to, is I'd like just to get this through, where we're at, not putting any back in there, knowing we're going to be working on maybe positions or equipment for doing certain things, like the DPW, stuff like that. At least tax result, this is where we're at, this is what we're doing, this is why we're doing it, because we want to maintain the services that we got.
Okay. Let me go to Lynn.
So Scott, I just want to say, if I understand you correctly, October 29th, what you're referencing to, $286,000 was added, is that what you're saying? That you would like to reverse that and go back to what we were before, and move the budget forward?
Yes, as it was presented.
For recognizing that we can add and subtract items, individual items, as brought up with the department heads, Greg and Jenny throughout the year.
Yep. Jenny, go.
I'm just wondering if it would be a good time for you to go over the projections, so the council members have.
It is always a good time. What we need to do is get you set up, because you're going to want to stand.
Jimmy, can I ask you a question while you're getting up? Sure. The numbers that you gave us for salary increases and the three options, did they include, did they take into account the state's rate of increase?
Well, no. No, that was just for the admin.
Okay. Then I won't worry about it.
Can I take that back?
So administrative salaries in there?
I'm going to have to confirm that, Katie.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just picturing how I've got my spreadsheet set up, and I just am not quite remembering. Okay, so I, I handed out two memos to you today, and what I would like to overfirst is lobby projections, because I think this will assist in how you want to decide going forward. So what I did is for revenue assumptions, I'm just going to highlight the main ones, the major ones, is on the tax levy increase, I assumed $600,000 for '26 through '28, because we were almost at that mark for the current tentative budget, with a 3% increase thereafter. Occupancy tax, I assumed a full year for 2027 at $400,000, which I feel that number is very solid because of my information from the county. Paid parking, I assumed a full year of $500,000 for 2027. And then the additional state aid, I'm anticipating that the state may continue the additional state aid, so I put in $259,000, and they're going to see it in the spreadsheet. On the expenditures, the salaries, I anticipated a 3% annual increase. Health insurance, I was very optimistic, because I, I put in 5%, and the reason I put in 5% is when I put in 15%, those health insurance costs just skyrocketed, and we will just not be able to sustain those numbers. So I did 5%, saying, and no, telling you that this is optimistic, but we must consider, closely consider this in the future. We have to monitor what the health insurance costs are going to do, and if they're going to continue to go up at the pace they are, what choices we have to make in the future for them. Retirement, because of the double digit, I did 10% prediction. And equipment, in 2027, I began the number at $600,000, and then gradually increased it up to $1 million to 2030. And the council has been informed that the city needs to invest at least $1 million annually into our equipment, and have a lot. And then we're assuming that all street projects are going to be funded by state programs, therefore, there's no transfers to capital projects. But however, the city should be working towards $1.5 million annually to be invested in the streets and sidewalks, in addition to our state programs. So that's something else to consider. So you will see when we go over the spreadsheets that the projections include, conclude that the unrestricted fund balance will still be needed to balance the budget. It is important to remember the differences between budget and actual. Since 2000, the city's total fund balance has grown over $8.1 million. And the, since 2021 through 2024, the city's total fund balance has grown by 4.5 million. This is due to conservative budget. We don't overestimate our revenues and our expenditures. We try to get those right on, except because of vacancies and/or projects not being completed for one reason or another, that we have excess funding there. So the goal of the budget is to report the expenditures needed to provide the staff and the services to the community. However, those expenses are, are going to need to be funded, and how those fund services are going to be funded. So the city's approach has always been conservative, and the budget includes full staffing for each department. So this projection is going to show that the council needs to consider the long-term future of the city's financial condition. And by considering how current budget decisions will affect future funding of the expenditures at the current level of services that we're providing. So now, if you go to page three, you will see that I've taken the '26 tentative budget, and I projected '27 through 2030. And as I said, property tax, oh, I'm sorry, that says 5%. I need to adjust that. I did $600,000 for '26, '27, '28, and then 3% for '29 and '30. And then the things they, they... And then the things, they, the, the numbers that are in red indicate to you things that we do not have in place at this time. It's the occupancy tax, the additional state revenue sharing, the interest earnings, that is just an estimate, that will be based on interest rates, on how the economy and the federal government and how the interest rates are set by the feds, that will, will affect what we're earning on our investments. And then on page two, I put in paid parking, assuming that will be up and running in full in 2027. And then the, the others, I've indicated there for you to see how I projected them in the future, they're very small adjustments. So for 2026, we go from 19.6 revenues to 21.6 revenues. So we were able to increase our revenues by over a million dollars. Matter of fact, far over 10,000, I think it's at 1.9. Then on page six, you will see what I did with the expenditures. I broke it up into personal services, police, fire, public works, and all other, and then fringe benefits, payroll taxes, health insurance for actives, retirees, and retirement for police and fire, and retirement for all others. And then I showed the equipment, and then all of the other expense categories, services, supplies, utilities, and so on. And you will see at the bottom how much we'll be using from restricted and unrestricted. You will see that in 2026, it's 1.8 for the unrestricted, but 2007, 2027, it gets decreased down to 739,000. Now, all these numbers are subject to change depending on how the actuals come in, but this just gives you an idea of the decisions that you're making today on how it's going to affect future budgets. And you will see how that grows, because when, as I, as I've argued about percentages versus flat dollars, when you put 5% on a health insurance bill that's $4 million, that 5% grows very quickly in comp time to year after year. So that is why you will see the unrestricted fund balance being, using, you know, the number is increasing as time goes on. So I just wanted you to kind of study this and, and see how your decision that you make for this year's budget, for '26 budget, how it's going to affect your future year's budgets. So if we stay at the 300,000, it's going to change these numbers, and I can, I can show you that again at the next meeting. But as of right now, I, I rounded it up based on this current tentative budget from 563, and I just rounded it up to 600,000. So I just wanted you to be aware of the projections for the next five years.
You said you did that, your projection, you said you had to go back and change, but that's, you had 5% throughout '27, '28?
For, for, no, I'm sorry, I did not change my, I want you to know, I finished these about five minutes before the meeting.
No, 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 I didn't hear what you said.
Yeah, so it was 600,000 for '26, '27, and '28, and then 3% for '29 and '30 on the tax levy.
We just left '29 and '30 at 5%.
I, I can recalculate that. I was trying to stay close to what I thought the tax cap formula would be by then. That's, that's what I was thinking.
Right, fast enough. So for '26, '27, '28, you're thinking 600,000?
Correct.
Which is basically 10%.
Yep.
And then, I'm sorry, for '29 and '30?
I did 3%.
3%.
Yeah, which is written in the, we already did that, I'll, I'll, so it's there for you.
All right, gotcha. All right. Where are we? Can you get it off?
Oh, no, it's right, it should be right here on your desk. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't know you had your desk.
Scott, that one.
Oh, look at this.
Yeah. Sneak your slip.
Here, hold your data. Now, and I just wanted to show you some quick math. So right now, we appropriated 1.8 million in the 2026 budget. So if we increase taxes again by 600,000, that brings it down to 1.2. If we give occupancy tax of 400,000, that brings it down to 800,000. We get paid parking of 500,000, that brings it down to 300,000. If we get the additional state aid, that wipes out 8.1 million. So those are a lot of unknowns, but I want you to think about that for the future, to understand that we have vision of how we're going to get rid of that appropriated fund balance, but it's just going to take time. That's why my recommendation for the tax levy increase is to do it over a three-year period to see where we are when the actual, actual of the revenues come in. Because we, we've got an estimate on our, on our sales tax for our short-term rentals and, and, you know, the addition, additional revenues there, but we don't know that money definitely. So it's just, I just want you to, to consider that math.
Thank you, Jenny. So I'm just going to jump in. So there are a number of certain uncertainties, right? A parting, occupancy tax, state aid, may potentially, apparently, Len, you were on the same webinar I was, right? So there are other potential state fundings that are being pushed by NICOM as well. So there's a bunch of, you know, uncertainties, but they are all on the plus side. And where we are right now, and I'm going back to Don's point, where we are right now is, there's a lot of uncertainty around what tomorrow will bring outside of the mechanics of running the city, totally more to the mechanics of running the household. And, and everything's going to go up. The, the city school taxes are going to go, they have to make up for the lack of a Department of Education. And so in some fashion, I'm sure, they're going to do something that is going to point up costing a little bit more than, you know, what the Department of Education was handing us, which we can, we can appreciate as much as we might, and on and on. And so given that, I'm the last one for kicking a can, as I think everybody at this point knows, but we couldn't afford to kick the can.
And actually, if, if the council is considering to go back to the original budget that was presented, without the additional changes that, you know, we had with the 265, my recommendation is to at least consider between 300,000 and 600,000 for the tax levy, and then just reducing the appropriated fund balance. That would be my recommendation, because then you can increase your appropriated fund balance during the year, the things that you think you want to add, and as time goes on. But, but that way, you are preparing, you're laying the foundation for the future by still trying to, to control costs.
So let me have some, thank you very much, Jenny. Let me have some discussion on council members' direction that we need to go, because we need to continue to file this budget and have something presentable for our next meeting. Tick, 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 right. So discussion on council members as to, you know, what you've heard and where you land on.
Sorry, Jimmy, if you could just repeat that last suggestion, that it's 300,000 to 600,000, is that recommendation? And then adding in as the budgetary year?
Yes, if, if.
Goes on?
Yes, if the council decides that they want to go to the original budget presented before the additional 267,000 was added. My suggestion would be to consider the tax levy between 300,000 and 600,000, and then just reducing the 1.8 of appropriated fund balance. That would be my suggestion. And that way, you're laying the tax levy work for going forward, and you also know that you've got room to, to increase that during the year if so needed. And I've, I also, in the previous information that I showed council, the tax levy used to support almost 40% of the general fund budget. It's now down to about 27%. And maybe, just trying to remember my, my information that I gave you. So in our sales tax, it's supporting more of the general fund budget than the tax levy. It really should be just the opposite. So I, I just want you to keep that in mind if you go, that is in the, it's in the July 28th memo, and I think it's page 13, that shows you the, the fund balance supports that, it's around there, 13 to 15, so I, that's the, the legal sheets that are folded over.
So we have Lynn and Scott, I believe, are the two that have balled in at this point saying that if we leave the budget going back a few weeks as was presented, don't add in the 260,000 and change with additions, personnel, et cetera, et cetera. But I agree as a council that as the funds allow and discussion, you know, would point to the identification, maybe some of these to be brought back as, as they can be afforded. So, so I've got two folks that are, right, Scott and Lynn, you're saying that that's where you are right now in terms of what the budget, the, the cost of the budget, not necessarily where we're funding it at, might be, which is essentially roll back and kind of put a pin in the 260,000 worth of improved assets to the, to the city and come back and visit those another time as we can afford to, to do, and hopefully we'll be able to do. So on, on just that, where do we land? Go ahead, Susan.
So, so, so the, the 5% increase would not, so where the original budget presented to us was?
The preliminary budget was a $300,000 tax levy increase. So I'm asking you to fill back to that.
That was 5, when I did 5%.
Yeah, it was 5.4.
5.4.
5.4. If you go with 400,000, it was 7.2. If you go with 500,000, it's 9%. If you go with 600,000, it's 10.8.
So glad to see you.
So then the six hour and like 45 minute meeting we had about?
Essentially establishes that we don't forget it, and, and rather you guys don't forget it. Then, then there was good work done. And, and potentially that good work is affordable.
Okay.
I think that's, that's what Scott's saying, right?
Yeah.
Right. Right, right, so that's what you're saying, right? Yeah, and I think that's what Lynn's saying as well, is we can come back to that, as we know that we can afford that.
The 300,000, if you do it, is approximately 82 dollars in annual increase. 400,000 is approximately 139 dollars. 500,000 is approximately 135 dollars. And 600,000 is approximately 162 dollars.
And this is on 130 something or other thousand dollars?
132,000, it's the average.
Right, right. Right. And of course, that tax bill just, I'm just being a jerk here, but that tax bill is, you receive it, you pay it, there isn't, we don't currently have the ability to, to, correct, I mean, we're not paying our tax bill on a monthly basis.
Correct.
Right, so it's a hit, it's a hit that sometimes people have planned for, and sometimes life has undone those plans. Just for what it's worth. Go ahead.
Well, I think, you know, I'm pondering this suggestion and leaning towards it only because of the current context that we're in, the economic vulnerability that people find themselves in, many people, many of our residents, and so I want to make sure that we're cognizant of that, I'm cognizant of that, even though my tendency would be to do a larger increase in terms of property tax, to not kick the can down the road, which is what the conversation was last year, and then also this year. So, so to me, the context this year is of utmost relevancy.
Yeah, if there's, there's, there's a goal that we've determined that maybe we can't afford in this moment, that we might be able to afford, and we've determined is a priority, and hopefully that'll, I inform council discussions. Go ahead, Susan.
Yeah, yeah, just, I, I think this is an interesting proposal, and I have been telling everybody all along, you know, I'm, you know, I'm open to proposals, because what I want to do is balance the budget in a responsible way and make sure that we have the services. You know, and, and my, you know, I am very concerned, too, about making sure that we are setting ourselves up for the future. So I do want us to make sure we keep that in mind as we, you know, narrow in on the, you know, this final number, but, you know, as much as I would like to include all of these, I'm also open to, you know, negotiating, you know, looking at this for next year along with, you know, all these other considerations we can talk about.
Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, you want me over because you wanted to put that money in. I wouldn't sit there and put the money in, so this is kind of my compromise back to you saying, when it gets here, we, yeah, absolutely, I think we need to, everything that we discussed is back on the table, there you go.
Yeah, and the, and the one thing I forgot to say is, you know, I, I recognize and really appreciate all of the hours and, you know, effort that staff put into this document, and I know that that is, you know, a small task and took a lot of consideration. And so I really, you know, respect, you know, what you guys came up with, and appreciate it. Thanks.
Mike, did you have something?
I do have some concerns. I'm looking at, from the, like, the sheet that Jimmy generated in the middle of our meeting, in the middle of our seminar meeting, with, like, the stuff that we had voted upon to put back in.
Yeah, 265,000.
265,000. Just looking at this list of things that we kind of, not, can have consensus, at least I have a majority of it, that are more important to put in the budget. And I'm, I won't be here, so you won't have my voice in front of the conversation next year, but I'm not entirely confident that these things will get funded if we put it off. And, and so a different proposal I'm thinking about, something I was thinking about, is that of that 265,000, actually, a majority of it was the increased fire overtime budget. Because I think it was, Katie, I think you were going to say, we're going to end up spending it any day, so we might as well plan for it. But, but we have talked as a council about how to reduce that fire overtime budget. And so I'm thinking, I mean, that was 108,000 out of 265,000, so my proposal instead would be to, to go ahead and fund everything else, the 80,000, and then let the fire overtime budget be, depend on whether we have that additional revenue. I mean.
Additional discussion on council members?
I still think we need a communication position. I would be, I would be fine with what you're suggesting. I also know that we are going to hire someone by January 1st for that, presumably, but I just think it's like so critically important for our residents, especially if we're going to increase taxes, that there is a tangible benchmark. And I think that feeling, better communication out of City Hall is a really big extender. So that's, that's, it's not in there, that 265,000, but I would honestly be in favor of, like, scrapping everything else and just putting it up, because I think it's really needed in our community for our out.
I think that was another 105, if I recall.
It's 99.
It was 99?
Yeah.
That, that's, that's all in for?
Right. But also, and I know Katie doesn't speak as hard, but if that person was to go in and, like, HR, take the hope, the HR, how time would get away, then come out of City Hall, that's a good idea.
Scott?
So that's what I'm saying, like, this gives us time to work on that position, you know, because that's one of the ones that we're going to put back in. We got time between Finance, Human Resources, and Gray, and HR, and Jenny, and everybody, everybody, it's going to be a problem, have to come up with a good job of what we really want, before we just throw the money there and that really gets, I just think, and I'm trying to compromise here, that's what I'm saying, I know we're going to put that back in, and, but let's have, have it the way we want it, because it might actually be, we might actually fine tune that, find out that we've got to pay more, you know, you know what I'm saying? So that's, that's what I'm, I'm thinking, theory was like, do we want it the way we're doing it now? Know where we visit that, you know?
There's, there's a difference, I'll have to write to you, Lynn, but there's a difference between this year's conversation and past years', certainly last year's, where, coming out of this, we're identifying some needs that need, that require funding that we can't fund, but we've identified those needs, and I think there's a commitment among council members to address those, and some of them, to your point, Scott, in the case of this position, for instance, may benefit from just a little bit of time to gestate, a little bit of time for people to, you know, kind of weigh in on, on various aspects of it and kind of see how that sus- of see how that susses out and whether or not, in fact, it might be a more expensive position and appropriately so, and how then that winds up being paid for. So there, the value to me that I see is that there's a commitment among council members for actions that will require funding even as we don't fund them now because we don't have it. Does that make sense? Go ahead.
And I was just going to say, I have been a fierce advocate for adding that position, and I will continue to advocate for that, but I do see the benefit in taking the time to look at that position and, because we were not all on the same page about what the expectations were for that position. So I think it would be beneficial to give ourselves more time to look at that and go through committee processes with the, looking at what that entails, because I think what's more important is that it's feeling like we're coming to some compromises here that we can agree on, and I think, I think as far as providing assurances to the public, I think if we can get through this budget process the way that we have been, which is much different than last year in a cohesive way, I think that will be reassuring to the public.
So at this point, I think, I'm not certain that we have full consensus on what the budget might look like in terms of what the, what the tax rate might be, if they use the tax rate framework, the monies we want to be funding, 300,000, 400,000, so that we can prepare a budget, and maybe that's the piece we need to really kind of land on at this point. So discussion around that? Do we?
Yeah, that's back to, it was like 305, 5.4 was what they gave us.
Yes.
And that's what I was proposing, is we do that, going now, even January, February, March, we're taking on the other, and all the way that time the state gives us our answers, and even not, we'll figure out somewhere in between all that how to fund some of this stuff.
Sure, and some of the things that we are concerned about on the federal side, hopefully shaken out at that point, give us a little bit more of a sense of, you know, how solid the ground is under our feet. Where are you at on this line?
I am very agree. This is actually, over a week ago, I'm sorry that I missed the six and a half hours.
That does not seem.
I was having fun with my.
At all. You're not convincing me. All right, so let me, Don, outside of the fact we're not going to 2%, are you inclined?
3. something percent, and I'd like to say something in defense of Tom DiNapoli, the state comptroller.
Sure.
He's highly recommended, he's highly respected, and Jenny has quoted him many times from his podium.
Okay, so are you, right now, we have two folks, the council are saying 300, yeah, 5.4%.
3.4.
Yeah, we try not to talk percentages, we like to talk dollars amounts.
So tax cap, the tax cap for this. 3.4, I'm sorry. You don't want this. Yes, 3.4 is the tax cap.
I didn't know what you said.
I just wanted to say it for the record, I do not support a $300,000 tax levy, because I told, last year, we should, I, my recommendation was for 600, and I told you that my ask was going to be bigger for this year, and the ask will be bigger for next year.
Yeah.
Because the more we delay in raising the tax levy where we think it needs to be, the harder the request is going to be as the future goes on. And I, so I just wanted for the record that I do not support a $300,000 tax levy.
And that's resonated with all of us. We, I think there's not a single one of us who doesn't understand the position and said, you know, objectively, that's the position you should take. We're also looking at, again, the uncertainties that are 2025, and that impact potentially. So, Don, you're, and so, Mike?
As I said, I would vote for a $300,000 increase, because I think we need to fund for the things that we want to do, we want the services of our city to be provided.
Let me go to you, Katie.
Can you come back to me?
Sure, of course. Elaine, I'm going to come around the other way then.
Yeah, I'm happy with that, talking back, going back to that. I'm not happy with it, but I am willing to make that compromise with the, like I said, with the understanding that we are coming around to consensus on how to continue to address this.
These are difficult choices, Cecilia.
I think, you know, following Mike, I would concur that I do believe we need to properly raise higher than 5.4%, and that's where I would be comfortable. However, I think the broader context here needs to be taken into account, and I would probably, I know I'm not supposed to say reluctantly cast a vote, but whether or not I would cast a vote, I would cast a vote for 5.4%.
Yeah, and I think we all understand and agree that, perfect quote, we raised the tax to the level that it needs to be to fund as Ginny has been prescribing for all the reasons that you have. These are difficult times, Katie.
I'm still deliberating, but you have five, so.
Yeah, all right, so that gives you direction. Did somebody say something? No, okay. That gives you guys direction. It's not ideal, I appreciate, that's not, I do appreciate that it's not, but at least you have direction. Yeah, I know that's hard to.
In the rest, next year we'll probably go.
Yeah, next year's going to be, you know, unless something rains from heaven.
We have to hire somebody to get it out to the public.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mike.
This touches on a lot of these known unknowns, but I just, I'm looking at the list from that report, or, or, I just wanted to clarify, I think these two acts that we talked about that weren't actually going to be out of this budget was the City Hall Door Security, which I think you said would come out of the building reserve, and the public arts, 13,000 for public arts, you said we also had a separate fund. So those two things would remain. And then, I guess I'd love to hear from the council, whether, like, how you see prioritizing the rest of these things that we hope to do, knowing that we will hopefully have room tax at some point next year, we hopefully have money, which do you think, do you, I'm just curious, do you like, like Katie said, feel like that personal position, however it ends, is a priority, or do you feel like the, some of the facility stuff we talked about, like renovations and that kind of thing?
So what I would suggest, and I'll go to you, actually, what I would suggest is that, again, the Budget Review Committee is going to continue, okay? And I've already asked those committee members to take on a little bit of a different charge, although related, obviously. And part of that could be the identification of priorities and then the potential funding of priorities, do we, have we determined that we have the monies to cover that? And then that is a Finance and Human Resources conversation, and then it then becomes a council consideration. So I would guess that that's probably the through line for that.
Makes sense, solid process.
Yes.
The only thing I was going to add to that is, we kind of already set the priority, we already know that position, that, the community position, yeah, sort of, call it.
Yes.
Is priority one, or do we want to add? So, you know, that's, I think the naked eye of that.
Sure. All right. Yes.
Just one more thing, like, hearing that, and then you got the process that we did this year, it might be a good idea moving forward for us to think about, like, some synergy between budget review and financing, what that looks like.
Yeah, and that's a real positive that's likely to come out of this too, as a silver lining. And, you know, it's kind of.
So if I understand my instructions, I'm going to modify the budget, bring the tax levy back down to a $300,000 increase, I'm going to include the 300,000 for the building reserve for the door activity, and the 13,000 for the public art.
Right.
Okay, and the other.
Yes. That 13,500 came out of for public art, it's being moved from?
It's another fund, it's not in the general fund.
Right, that's just.
But that was, that was a change from the seven hour.
That's right, just, I was clarifying, and I didn't know that.
And then the only other question I have, because we had discussed this in that long meeting, is the cyber insurance. So is that all the, the cyber?
Yes, that's a good, yes.
Yeah, oh, across seven hours, we decide the wrong importance.
So then, so then could we do 325,000 on the tax levy to cover the cyber insurance?
Sure. Anybody, anybody object to that? You know, I'm looking at you, Don. Anybody object to that? 325,000 dollars. Seven, like, six percent.
I'm sorry?
Could be an even six percent.
Why don't we just go to 6.3, that's 350,000 dollars.
6.3 is, I'm sorry?
Why don't we just go to 6.3, just maybe even 350,000 dollars.
Do the 350.
I'd support that, because I definitely would have supported, you know, higher than that, and I did, but, again, compromise and wanting to find where we can all.
So we're looking, we're looking right now, I feel like an auctioneer, the number on the table is 350,000 dollars, okay? You're good with it, you're good with it? You're probably thinking about it. Yeah. Don, skipping over you. You're good with it, you're good with it, you're okay with it? You're okay with it?
Well, I think what I said was that I think it should be higher.
Yes, but you'll, you'll support 350. I'm not putting words in your mouth, I'm just asking.
I, I think I would not, and I think it should be higher, but I think you have the votes for it, so I don't think my vote matters in that case.
Your vote always matters.
I mean, yes, but I think it would cost without my support.
Maybe, 350, so I'm going to do 350 in the revised budget, 25,000 for cyber insurance, 30,000 from the building reserve for the door access system, and 13,000 for the public art.
Yep, that's, I believe that's where we're at. I would like to get to a motion unless I need to continue on with something that I'm not aware of.
Water and sewer.
Oh, water and sewer, do you want to do water and sewer?
Yeah, continue.
Go ahead. A break?
Just that, right.
Okay, eight o'clock?
Five minutes is good.
Eight o'clock on the button. All right, we're back. All right, anyway, we're back, and then Jenny has retaken the podium, and will regale us now on the subject of water and sewer.
So the second memo that I gave out to you tonight has to do with our water and sewer rate tables. So the memo just kind of summed it up, but I'll go over it. So the proposed sewer and rate tables for 2026 consist of a water minimum increase of $12 and a sewer minimum increase of $10. And then increase the second through the fourth step by 10%, and all the following steps by 2%. As I said to the council last time, Waterworth thinks that we have too many steps in our rate tables, they're recommending that when we do the conversion, we turn it into three steps. I was going to present something to you for that tonight, but as Greg and I discussed it, we thought it would be better when the full rate restructure presentation is presented to you. And so what I did in the memo is I summarized the annual billing, showing you that we had 3,805 accounts, 1,965 of them did not go over the annual billing, or the minimum billing, so that's almost 52% of the annual customers stay under, just under the 37,000 gallons. The city has approximately 17 monthly accounts that accounts for about 92 million gallons of water consumption, and we have approximately 71 quarterly accounts that approximately is 64 million. And I'm sorry, my memo does not have quarterly in there, so I will fix that. So these 88 customers constitute approximately 45% of the gallons consumed. And so I wanted you to put that in perspective, that we've got 88 customers that is supporting 45% of the volumes. And I also, just for note of information, that the town rates are 50% greater than just the agents. So with the proposed increases on the rate tables that I provided you, the annual bill for those that do stay within the minimum will go up $22. 37,000 gallons to 75,000 gallons will go up $66. 75 to 195 will go up about $218. And I stopped from, I want to stop going from there, because we have very few customers that go over that mark. And then I wanted to also remind you that the monthly and quarterly billings are billed on the rates that you're going to adopt for 2026, but the annual bill will be for the minimum that you adopt for '26, but the annual bill will be based on the '25 rates, because that is when their consumption is used. So I just wanted you to take a look at these rate tables for the water and for the sewer, and then just give me the feedback on what you would like to see. We do need to lay a local law, and it depends on Kerry's knowledge on the calendar, when we have to get it placed by, so that way we can get it voted and adopted in time for January 1st.
Don?
I think we should approve the regulations from Jenny for water and sewer. He's important in this project, and I support him.
You're surprising me.
I'll take the opposite stance.
Somebody.
Well, we've had several discussions about how much infrastructure we have to repair and how much it's going to cost, so, and we're trying to not hit the customer all at once for it, and just go the slow and steady as we progress.
It seems to be the formula that is working and that everybody has agreed to now these multiple, several years.
We need clean water and intent discharge area water.
Should. Further discussion?
I just want to say, like, looking at this, I also support it, and I also, like, looking at this layout of where the customers are, I see why they say we shouldn't have so many steps, because you have one customer, and it looks like, or, okay, one in the city, two in the town, you know, like, a handful of customers in some of these, you know, brackets, like, that makes sense to me.
Scott?
I prompted it with my foot and my mouth great, but if that proposed project goes through in the West End, well, two questions. Proposed project in the West End to the All-Star Village, if that goes through, will that help offset some potential increases? And then number two, has the water district gone through yet so that we can start?
Man, that's the two questions I was waiting to ask.
I'm sorry, I would like to ask you a couple of questions.
Wait until we get through this proposal. So Greg, you want to?
The Waterworth presentation.
Right. So Greg, you want to?
So, yeah, I can't quote a number, I forget the estimated usage to you, Chris, 30,000, 30,000 gallons, right, for All-Star Village over the course of their, over the season. So what that equates to in revenue, we can't do the math, but obviously there's a fluid increase cost in producing the water, but yes, it would offset, you know, the additional of it, because the infrastructure that's being added is that they're expensive, they're installing the meter pit, the meter, which that becomes ours, we sell them the water. That, and the second part of the question, there's two different water districts in consideration by the town, one is for the All-Star Village, basically that extension, the other is for the existing West End Water District in the town of Long Island, where the city owns all of the infrastructure in the town. The town has emailed, Chris and I, we need to review with Jenny and the state attorney as well, proposal for an agreement, so there would be, we're back up, they have approved, as far as I understand, the town has approved the creation of at least the West End, if not both water districts. Along with them, the town creating the district, they have to have an agreement with the city for us, in the case of the existing infrastructure, if we're going to continue, the idea was that we're going to continue to own that, we're going to continue to do everything the way we do it now, which is with the district, which is different than how you normally do a water district outside of the city. So we have to review that proposal, and we're, now they are proposing, I haven't not read it in detail yet, I haven't had a chance to, but I noticed quickly that they're proposing agreeing to a lower percentage, so 112. So we have to review that proposal and work with them, now they are proposing, I haven't not read it in detail yet, I haven't had a chance to, but I noticed quickly that they're proposing agreeing to a lower percentage, so under twenty-five percent of city rates instead of a hundred and fifty percent. So there's, you know, things to discuss and consider whether we agree to anything like that. A more traditional water district is like the All-Star Village one, or at the city line or at the end of our main, we just put in the meter and sell them all. And that's what also we need to negotiate, what, you know, plus something in that order. Suggest that it be the same hundred and fifty percent charged for the rest of the town. So those are in process, should be coming through committees for discussion in the next month or so.
But depending on every hurdle. You're all good.
Okay.
So that other water district will include what was just developed, I'm referencing towards Town and Stewards. That's what county will have in discussion.
The existing West End water system in the town would be in the, I would say, West End Water District one. I forget how the town numbered them, but a second, separate district would be just for All-Star Village expansion. And so the first one would include the Stewards.
Taking into consideration that we have future plans.
Yes.
That allows us to collect where we can now.
That, having the district allows the town to re-levee unpaid water and water bills on their taxes, or the city can do that for city customers, we can't do that for town customers. That was the impetus for trying to have a town water district established.
Okay. Okay, so getting back to your presentation, did you, so so far you've got everybody nodding yes?
Yes, all right, so if we agree to these tables, then I will, Kerry, I will forward them to you and we can lay the local law. We don't have to lay the local law for the sewer rates, and then Kerry will schedule a public hearing and we'll be able to adopt that in December.
Okay, so at this point now, we have a motion that I didn't get to, totally unmade. We, we had been discussing a number of things and I had pushed this back, it originally had been on the consent agenda and I pushed it to discussion, rather. The council members asked for it to be pulled to discussion, I think I might have knew Katie, I think. And that's, it was, yeah, and so that's on our, the only item on our discussion agenda, and I'd like to hit that now if we could. And that is, we have, yeah, we do, okay. Motion that the common council approves the following additions to the general fund reserve accounts. Public safety reserve, five hundred thousand dollars, highway equipment reserve, five hundred thousand dollars, street and sidewalks reserve, five hundred thousand dollars, park and recreation reserve, one hundred thousand dollars, IT reserve, one hundred thousand dollars, and airport reserve, fifty thousand dollars. I have a motion, I guess we've got done, I'll let you land, and Katie, I think you were the one to pull, so let me let you, were you not?
I was, but it's fine if this is where everybody feels comfortable.
Is there anybody who doesn't feel comfortable to discuss? No, we're good? Okay, let's take a, this. So, all right, so, all right, we can call them.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walshusa?
Aye.
Councilmember Loparchu?
No.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Uh, yeah.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
All right, and I do believe we've gotten to, we have anything else to do here?
Capital plan.
Capital plan, oh my goodness, what was I thinking? Greg?
Well.
What?
I would, I would first ask if there are questions, people have had a chance to review the capital plan, is there any particular thing you want to talk about? Kind of went through, it was on there last time briefly, but I have a chance to look at it.
Greg, oh, sorry. Go ahead, let me, I'm gonna go start one.
So Greg, um, page. The twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, the general parks track, over pool splash pad. Have we gone after the, go ahead, that's the future money operation we had secured.
They, they have, we emailed them a few weeks ago and asked, are they a hundred percent committed to doing the project and having the funding in place for spring twenty twenty-six? They said yes, by the end of the year they intend to have all the funding. So that gave, you're going to go ahead to, again, demolishing the waiting pool, have a plan to do that this fall, I don't know if we've done it yet.
Just going here back to the assault.
So from what they told us, they're going to have the funding in place of doing this.
Yes, Scott?
So Greg, I mean, on the last page, it says, on water supply, you have twenty-thirty to the Cattella well development. Being that we're gonna add another thirty thousand dollars, we just threw thirty thousand, probably thirty thousand gallons to solid water and the fact that we've been watering in the negatives. Should we bump that up to get that done sooner than later? And then that raises me to another question about the reservoir, is there anything that we should be doing up there to dissipate or add up to our infrastructure there? Like whether we gotta, like, dig it deeper or?
That's not something we've looked at or talked about. You know, the second, developing the second Cattella well, which is there now, there's a process to that, I mean, we, sure, we could bump that up. But keep in mind with the addition of the All-Star Village, that's in the summer when students are not here, so there's more than, you know, that's more than offset by the absence of SUNY and Hartland students over the summer.
Yeah, but normally that's a reset from, like, SUNY and Hartland students being here, having to pay taxes and service. It's kind of like going with a reset to help, we prayed for ready to do those ones, to help reset the whole lot, so. If we're gonna really have a reset or a pause in what we're using, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, it really, obviously depends on the weather, you know, we're typically overflowing, the reservoir is still live, but unless you're in drought situation, like we have in the last two summers with falls. If, if the weather was full, you're not, you don't just add anything to that, you have less, less you could expect.
So is there a way to get help in the south soon?
We can, we look at that, I think that's a conversation with EPW to see where does it fall as far as our priorities and how to say we're looking, water fund, it's gonna fund water supply projects like that. We have the upcoming treatment plant, uh, payment that's gonna be, well, we're zero interest loan payment is really coming along. We have a lot of water distribution mains we want to replace, so it's really a matter of shuffling what is the highest priority project, so I think we could take a closer look at that. But again, anything that's not shown in twenty twenty-six is where it fits right now on our priorities, and we can, we can adjust those. If you feel, if council feels like they want to prioritize increasing our water supply capacity, then we could talk about it.
I mean, I don't know how they, how anybody else feels, I mean, I do, just from watching it and watching that, with the two years of droughts and we're all adding more on it, I would feel more comfortable. I don't know if that's the right phrase, but more, I feel a lot more comfortable that we will bump that up on the priority for, make sure we have more water there. Because that's gonna add one hundred, what can we call it, a day, like, a couple hundred pounds.
I don't want to coordinate, I can't remember exactly, but we can get that to you.
I mean, that would also make me feel a little better avoiding the upper water mills and stuff, because we can, we don't really need doing that major infrastructure, getting that well online.
Let me quiet. Done with the project, is it, we have well and giving it up line, how long is it, do you expect it to take?
It's gonna take some time, it's gonna take the, we have to find a proper, uh, entry point. Study will be done by a geologist, um, it's gonna have to be the count, that our visiting well, neighboring private wells, uh, need evaluation on how it affects our, so it's gonna take some time to do investigations.
How are you looking at it, like, months, years?
I'm thinking a year, two years.
I don't really go down this rabbit hole too much, but, so one thirty-five is just the analysis. We ballparking the well, Pete?
Well, the well exists, it's not, but the wellhouse, you know, connecting it, I think, so it's not, you know, I think the original Cattella well, we replaced it, it was something like four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars. So inflate those costs to twenty twenty-five from about ten years ago and cut them down a bit because it's not adding the entire well. It's gonna be less than that. No, I don't think so, but it's been, yeah, we're shooting for mid right now, so I'm not gonna quote a number.
And I just paid three hundred and sixty-eight dollars to have one receptacle, we have a commercial building, so I don't, we're expenses.
We have additional discussion. Any additional, um, any additional items that you'd like to add?
Can I just ask about, can I just ask about Washington Street, it's on here for twenty twenty-six, is that chips or good, what's happening?
We're replacing the water main and hopefully doing the road as well.
Okay.
Yeah, the general fund would be chips or other state funds, uh, or not the water, the, the street work and sidewalk replacement, we'd like to do there. The water fund would be from the operating budget, so that is, that is, we're both funded.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, they, I'm sorry, we're doing the water main next year and we're doing the sidewalk, but the million paving would likely happen the following years, and how we plan that?
We go back and forth on it.
Yeah.
We do the lawn and hill this year, we do the water main this year, we're gonna do the sidewalk and the paving next.
Okay.
That's kind of the plan we're gonna do in Washington.
I know, I know we included.
And then go away the next year so that you have good time for settlement, because, you know, five-foot deep excavation, get frost heaved, get the soil removed, so I'd rather do a final pavement after that, free thaw happens.
That's helpful to know, because I think people will ask, right, like, why is it still not finished?
I don't see it here, Chris, but when did we say we were gonna level Cherry Street? Elaine?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I just had a follow-up.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Um, the sidewalk on either side is like maybe eighteen inches wide, is there any thought to, like, making it a full accessible sidewalk on one side?
I think we strive to have sidewalk on both sides of the street, um, that's something that we always strive for.
Sure.
I mean, we're really limited to how close the buildings are, the roadway, it's, it's a pretty tight road to begin with.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a tough time getting five-foot sidewalks on both sides.
Sure, I mean, even three feet would be great, just on one side, so that someone, I mean, right now, if you rely on heels, it's not a passable street anyway. But, you know, if we do redo it, it'd be great if it was something where, you know, people could actually use those sidewalks, they're not wide enough, so. I know that the idea is to have it on both sides, but, anyway, I said I would follow up on that.
The only comment I would add to that is obviously if you were eliminated parking, then you would have plenty of rooms to widen sidewalks, but we know that Washington Street is packed with parked cars.
Right, because they like don't have drivers.
Because they don't allow drivers, so, which is the priority.
Yeah.
How do you balance it?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, one thing that, you know, I noticed going through this is, you know, I, I, and this is mainly for the public, you know, there was a lot of surprise this year when we started talking about the airport projects. But I just want to point out that there are airport projects, you know, throughout the capital improvement plan, and so they are, you know, all like on the books and documented and, you know, here for the public to, you know, be familiar with.
Airport commission also meeting here at City Hall.
Yeah.
Folks will come to attend. Yep. I think we've exhausted the capital plan, at least in terms of this evening's input.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, can I ask a question? Did the Finance and HR Committee talk about the ACA improvements to the armory today? And what was the result of that conversation?
We're actually having a larger conversation.
Okay.
It's a grant application.
Okay, great, because that's on the, that's here on the capital improvement plan, and so, um, yes, I know it's a great opportunity, it's also a lot of money, so.
I mean, do you want to talk about it now?
We, we can. Yeah, I mean, we're just gonna move to discussion on Tuesday anyway, so we can talk about it now.
And we can talk about it anywhere.
Yeah, no, if everybody's okay with it, we can talk about it now, we just moved to discussion on Tuesday anyway, so.
Right.
Yeah, so we can talk about it now.
Okay, so in a nutshell, what we're suggesting, if we want to apply for this grant, which we can do so by the end of this year, is when the application deadline is, the funding will cease to exist unless New York State re-upps that grant program in twenty twenty-six, we don't know if they will yet. We can apply for up to a million dollars grant with no local match, however, the estimated cost of the improvements is one point three million dollars, so in order to apply for the grant to do, we install an elevator in the armory, which doesn't exist now, that would go from the basement to the third floor. Plus, we would replace the wooden temporary ramp and stairs out front with a more permanent architecturally, you know, appropriate ramp and stairs out front that would meet the expectations of the landmarks and historic preservation commission. That would cost one point three million dollars, based on our estimate, you know, assuming that that gets constructed somewhere around twenty twenty-seven, by the time you get grant funding and a construction project happens. So if we want to apply for that now, the council would need to commit three hundred thousand dollars for the match. Obviously, you still have a chance to accept or not accept the grant when it's awarded, but we'd like to commit ahead of time so we can put that in the application and say we have matching funds identified. So that could come from unrestricted general fund balance, as we know, we're talking with UDC Center for Development about potentially transferring ownership of the armory, if that goes through, they're still very interested. We haven't really gotten into the meat of any negotiations to bring anything forward to council for discussion yet, but presuming that moves forward, let's say we were to be awarded the grant and we were to transfer the building, we would work out with the granting agency whether we can transfer that grant or continue to have the city receive that grant and proceed with the project in partnership with the new owner. It would be a benefit to them, certainly would be a benefit to the city to move the property to someone else and continue to get good use out of it, better use. And I would suggest at that point we would be negotiating whether this, this developer is paying the match instead of the city, or that's part of the sale price negotiation. Alternatively, if that doesn't happen, the city continues to own the building, do we want to invest in it to make it more attractive to a developer if we'd like to sell it to someone else in the future if it doesn't work out, or redevelop it in some way ourselves to make better use of the upper floors and provide eighty-eight access, so.
So I would just add to that, there's no reason to think that the interest that's been expressed, which is significant, has abated at all. So it's extremely likely that a negotiation will wind up with, you know, a, a new owner, and it's just a question of whether or not that three hundred thousand dollars is something that they pick up, we pick up a portion of, we pick up all of, whatever, that's all part of a negotiation. But I think I was talking to a couple of council members about this notion of investing in ourselves, and when you're talking about the armory, which has been an albatross, it's a great thing if, if we are able to, and I think we will, be able to move it to UDC Center for Development. One way or the other, by investing in that infrastructure, we give ourselves a much more marketable building and one that potentially, if the UDC does, for some reason, not pursue purchase, then we would probably find someone who likely would. So it's an investment in ourselves. So it's an investment in ourselves. And we will visit it as a council if and when we're approved for the grant.
But if we're, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
But if we go for the grant and we've committed to the local match, our options are either to provide the local match or to return the grant. So we really should know now, even though we have the option to say no in the future as sort of a formality.
Sure, it's reasonable.
Lot of money.
Yes, Scott.
It is a lot of money, but I'm looking at it this way, if we, I would personally like to get rid of the armory. I've always made that clear, but if we're going to end up having to have it because we can't do it, I think we have to best in trying to make it more friendly. We have used it for emergency purposes, stuff has come up, so. Whether we do the elevator project or not, could be a whole different discussion, but at least a front.
Yes.
I think we really need at least a front.
I think the ADA compliance.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes, that's what I was.
Yeah, and that ADA compliance rolls through the building as well, potentially. The idea of being able to access multiple floors without having to contain the stairs significantly upgrades the value of the building.
Yeah.
Yes, Ma'am? When do you think you're going to get in the meeting today for the discussion? I'm telling everybody that I'm on a deadline and hoping, hopefully that's moving some people more quickly to some restitution. I'm on a deadline, doesn't mean they are, but, go ahead.
Well, you know, the three hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money and we, if that helps, you know, the elevator and the changes in the front, if they comply, that's all a good thing. I think the question I have is, the potential buyer, do they have the money? Are they going to be able to get something significant or give it away for a dollar?
I'm not privy to their, I don't think you are privy to their bookkeeping, but every indication given, their pattern of success in these developments would indicate that they're able to put their money where their mouths are.
And go get some of it?
Honestly, if we don't have the burden of the armory, we get.
No, I know, it's like a hundred thousand dollars a year or something.
Right, I mean, yeah, it was conveyed to us for a dollar, right?
Could be. Yeah. And so we'll have, we can bring a motion forward if we need one on Tuesday, now that we've discussed this.
We do need a motion.
Yep, we do need a motion. So bring motion forward on, on Tuesday, should be still an opportunity for discussion, but it'll probably be less. All right. Anything else that we need to cover this evening that I continually be surprised, so I keep asking? Yep, you're done with surprises, all right. Okay, in which case, we're going to call it done for this evening and we'll meet again in like four days and about, I don't know, eighteen hours, something like that.